Working a lot of nights, so. I'm in town, Ashen, so.
Like the call, please, for your dual reasons, shall?
Evan.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dantville.
Here.
Nande.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
Like to ask Sparta supervisor, Marchus, please, please.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which sustains one nation, under God, and in this world, with the liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of our last regular meeting, August 24th. For your consideration, does anyone have any changes to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion in a second, please.
Mo Schuster.
Sniggy Wesper.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. They have carried. We do have a public hearing this afternoon. I would like to ask Shannon to please speak on behalf of the hearing.
But currently, according to mortgage tax file of the county clerk, a one quarter percent of mortgage tax is collected. The additional quarter percent of tax is revenue that remains from the county and is authorized under an existing local law which is set to expire in summer first. This particular local law, now under consideration, simply allows the collection of additional quarter percent of tax for another three years.
Thank you. We clear the hearing open at this time. I'll ask if there's any member of the public wishing to speak on the public hearing. They can come forward to the podium and sign in, please, and address the board supervisors. Is there any supervisor wishing to speak on the public hearing? We'll leave the public hearing open until the end of the meeting, and I'll be asking those same questions again. We do have one communication, please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be held on Thursday, September 29th, 2022, at 5:30 PM at the Lester Town Hall, 132 Main Street, Lester.
Thank you. Also, we have abstract claims for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract claims. Yes, unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or any discussion that needs to be brought forward for this abstract claims? Hearing none, all please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Aye. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absence 79, adopted.
Next, we have privileges of the floor this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I request privilege of the floor for Don Mills, Executive Director of Live Well Community Wellness and Fitness Center. It would be Live Well Recreation Center presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. One more, please, Dan.
Okay. Thank you for the privilege of the floor. It's an exciting day for our team at the Livingston County to present some of the work we've accomplished over the past couple of months to the true community center of Livingston County. For introduction wise, I'm Don Mills, which I'll go through more in a second. I'm the executive director of the project. With me, and though I have no opportunity to speak throughout the middle of the presentation, is a couple representatives from the Bruckel family, Johnson and Jen, who have been assisting on the project alongside with a member of ACT infrastructure, Drew Bartley, who's a part of the architectural team that helped with some of the renderings we see here today. Okay, look at that guy. Few years ago, a couple sandwiches ago, but the reason for that slide there is, okay, a couple points. Obviously, I have a couple credentials I bring to the table, and another day I'll go through how I wound up in Geneseo, New York. But another thing that I want to point out through this slide as I move forward is I did my undergrad at Lock Haven University. The reason why I decided to enroll at Lock Haven University was because of the time they built the state of the recreation wellness center. Without that facility, I don't go to school there, none of this happened if I'm not in front of you guys here today. So just the setup for what we have to introduce with the product. Okay, Johnson sold it. You get into some of the facts and the data. Some members of the group here might recognize this study from 2017, 2018. Livingston County study supporting the need of a multi-generational recreational facility. Some of the top three community services identified in the study, sports recreation, community space, and seniors center. Further breakdown of those areas, and I just want to let the audience and the group know that as we continue to define what this recreational facility is going to mean for Livingston County, these are areas we're all looking to check box on, right? You know, it's an important data point that we've already invested in this county and community to make sure that we can use it for Livingston County. Okay, going to some more data briefly. By the way, after our presentation today, I'll be sure to send this app digitally to the group for further review. They've got links for all the studies in there. State of play, here at Rochester and Finger Lakes, 2017, the work done about the same time as the Johnson feasibility study assessed the state of play for some of those counties listed above, who recognize Livingston in there as an important cognitive process. By the numbers, 630 more parents were surveyed. There's a representation of the children in the household, and also some county leaders of sport facilities, et cetera, surveyed in the study. Some key takeaways, 12% of the Rochester-Finger Lakes region youth are getting the recommended one-hour daily physical activity. Obviously, we want to see that a little bit higher. 81% of the parents of the youth that were surveyed thought it was very important, somewhat important, that their children play sports regularly. And then a big bullet point there at the bottom, Livingston County is identified as one of the most underserved counties in the region of sports facilities. Something that we're looking to change. So continued numbers through the study, following grade that Rochester and Finger Lakes region received for youth sport activity. C+. They've got a lot of us through undergrad, but today I'm trying to do a little bit better along with your support and help. So we'll leave that up there for a second. Okay, get a little bit into where we are, keep the conversation moving. We officially registered, incorporated as a nonprofit, filed for on C3 since I took over the project in the middle of July. I'm going to have the Bruckel family talk a little bit about the project location and the donation that's been made for the project so far.
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Bruckel. Nice to see you again. We grew up as sports players, growing in the city outside Rochester, currently in the mid. We were definitely really never around our area for this type of facilities we were using. So and today I still do with my children. So I think it's a good thing for the community and the county to represent the facilities and for young kids and adults to use and, you know, stay in the county and keep attending the county. My father and our family are going to be donating to make this to the project and to get things started. We've taken some two steps, like hiring down to run the facility. So we're moving ahead. We're fully behind it, and we're going to do whatever it takes to get it done and workshop it.
So I understand. The land is actually going to be behind the mountain, behind the travel center over there, and there is a lot of acres. That's the main donation piece from our family. This was something that has been a pipe dream a long time ago, so my dad, he wanted to actually just bring to conference about 20 years ago, and it's as we've gotten older and grew up, all of us grew up in Livingston County, and all four of his children are back in Livingston County. Three with families, one will still be here, so there'll be four of us, all with children here. And we just, you know, now that we have children, we really like to provide a place for not only our youth, but our seniors and everyone in between, so that we have a wonderful place to go and it will serve so many different groups. So the other piece is what's, we're starting as a donation. Don's time right now is, it's a few prior come on, and then probably a lot of marketing stuff that will be the initial cost to start a website and all that stuff will be taken care of by our family. And again, like Josh said, this is, we're on track now to make this happen. It's been talked about for quite a long time, and the more support we get from our community, the better, because it's really going to hurt all the needs of our community and the whole county. Yep.
Okay, a piece is important. So yeah, every month that I have the opportunity to meet with some of the team over here, whether it's the team or the bill, I mean, I'm still hired, I'm still with the project, which is a good sign. So behind me, what you guys have seen and you came in, I'll speak briefly for Drew, for the sake of time. He's done a really good job working with us so far in the early stages to provide some of the renderings of what the facility's potentially going to look like. Some things to keep in mind, I'm going to some of the details for some quick hitters here in a second. The things to keep in mind is what's really important for us and the team is we want it to be true to Livingston County and have an authentic feel. You know, I've already engaged with the Livingston County Tropical Society about putting some elements in the facility that speak to the history of the area. And then, as you've seen in some of the renderings, there's a real farmhouse-style look to the facility that we think represents the area well, and it's a little more eye-catching than your traditional building. So, okay, so what's planned? It's kind of important, right? Nothing about all the sad stuff. This is why you're here. We don't care about all that. All right, so the multipurpose indoor turf field is going to be a piece of it. We've had some good conversations already with City Geneseo about doing some indoor track and field training days. And obviously, it's going to serve a nice, it'll be indoor, which is an important piece of what we're looking at. Aquatic center featuring a family activity pool. So more of a recreational-style space where, you know, families can go and enjoy the splash pad, the slides, the sprinkles, but indoors during the winters here. Some, you know, fitness training cardio equipment for members, which is pretty traditional. A cafe and community gathering lounge. So again, we're looking at a true community facility. It's not just a workout facility. Second core fitness space with outdoor access, having an indoor-outdoor idea concept, which we'll get into more in future conversations. Walking and jogging track, you know, there's a maybe more, we're trying to create a women's, maybe not just an open, right? We'll do some sort of corporate design rough facility that's going to be more exciting, interesting for people to visit for the winters. And then a child watch, I think, before and after school programs, type of situation where parents can drop their children off and enjoy the facility and all the benefits of a Livingston County long facility. Oh, yeah, I almost forgot. Couple indoor ice rinks with event seating that should hopefully be a nice marquee attraction for both people inside and outside of the county, especially given the location. Okay, we're nearing the end here, so let's talk about some economics. It's kind of important. So when we talk about a recreational facility, a community facility, this magnitude, again, the links through the power point which I'll send, the data out there says that, you know, individuals are more likely to move to counties with recreational needs that seek families, and particularly to rural counties. As you move through the information, you know, we're talking about average household income being higher by the data points for counties with recreational-type facilities that we're mentioning. We're talking about earnings per capita being higher. We're talking about attracting people to not only come to Livingston County, but to stay in Livingston County to raise their family. Project financing. Okay, so I've done some research on this, and there's a traditional budget model for a community-funded recreation facility. Because of the nature of this partnership between us and the county that's going to develop through the project, we're developing an operating budget that's less reliant on external funding. It's more of a business model. We're motivated to provide quality experience, but we also need to make sure that we're able to keep the lights on. And there's a couple of ways, a few ways listed. We can do that up there. And some of my previous experiences was listed earlier. I have experience generating this type of revenue through a non- or a private-based company. But one of the big ones there at the bottom, we've already been approached by a federal prospect hockey league commissioner to house their professional hockey team in the type of 3,000 or 4,000 city arena we're potentially planning as a nice attraction to the county, a way to generate some revenue to make all this go. So again, we're getting creative with how we're going to fund this thing, and it's being driven less reliant on external funding. Okay, short-term financing, we're, again, working with the architecture to identify the schematic conceptual design phase. Once that comes to life, then we'll move on to long-term finance the project. We estimate it's now put us anywhere between 25 and 40 million, which is a nice chunk of change. I've got some, I've got a plan. We have a plan for how we're going to pay for that chunk of the financing, which is through some of the items listed above. You know, as we go through, you look up to grants, potential senate assembly allocated, private and corporate gifts, fundraising events, construction money, potential USDA rural development. And then my last point there, accounting support through the group and the audience to consider as we continue to work together to make this project a reality, is if we don't act now, then what? This is the opportunity for Livingston County to really make the move on this thing, to make this a reality for the families that live here. And then we'll leave you with thank you and our conclusion there on the board as he takes the stand. Maybe add a couple notes if you choose. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. We're forward to working with the county and the communities to communicate the project as we think it's about Livingston County.
Just a few follow-ups to Don's presentation. A couple of months back, the group approached us as far as the IDA, sort of let the board know that this was kind of in the making, so to speak, from early on in the state. So no nonprofit in boom form yet. There wasn't talk of a land. There wasn't talk of the what ifs almost, the who, what, when, as far as the content and the specifics of it. So it's really nice to see from our perspective, where I sit and where I know Bill Bacon sits when we had our initial meetings, as far as now, there's a little bit more of what this thing might look like. I really like the aspect that, you know, you know what we went through as far as trying to kind of come up with different ideas with respect to what we could or couldn't do on kind of an overall community center concept. But we did have a study that sort of discussed the overall community need. So what we had happen here was a group without any, you know, prodding, that came on their own volition to go ahead and take that study and kind of run with it and to kind of see what might work based on certainly the vision and the mission of what the family and Peter's desires of wanting to advance from, you know, an endeavor period, but also kind of matching up then to what is in the study as far as a need. I will say that there's certainly been, you know, inquiries of the county with respect to what might be available, you know, on a financial support perspective. And, you know, we can certainly entertain those asks from the Bruckel family, from the nonprofit, as we go through this. Just to let you know some of the specifics of kind of what those, you know, could look like, you know, down the road. I mean, you've got certainly the IDA, you know, you have the possibility of some benefits that a project of this size with the job count and the scope and the structure is eligible for from an application perspective to go through the IDA to secure. So I know those conversations are, you know, have started to some extent and will be ongoing, so that's obviously a possibility. That could, I don't really know exactly what that will entail, but it could include things like pilots and sales tax exemptions and things of that nature to benefit the project. We also have had some conversations over the last couple of years about a senior center concept in the county through the Office for the Aging. So could there be a possibility in this project to consider an arrangement of that sort? That's certainly a consideration, so that's something to contemplate. The last couple, as I started to think about it, infrastructure fund. We have an infrastructure fund that's been tapped into about three or four times in my tenure for various projects that have an infrastructure need and a component to the project where they have a large-scale kind of multimillion-dollar job-producing project at the end of the line, so to speak, of what the infrastructure need is. We have an application process for that. There's a vetting process for that. This project would be entitled to that as much as any other project would, so they're certainly entitled to seek that. Letters support on our end, advocacy on our end, you know, grant support, letters support for other funding applications that we're going to go try to get themselves, that they may be entitled to, that frankly, we're not even entitled to. So I know that we will, you know, put our efforts behind that because of the, you know, the importance, I think, to the project for the county. And then finally, you know, really, it's all the other elements of anything that a project of this scope and size would maybe seek that others have sought before. So that could be, you know, available dollars in the county, regular budget, public-private grants, Harper allocations, regular budget allocations, you name it. Certainly, there's already been some inquiries about that, and that would obviously be a board consideration down the line. So as far as, you know, where I sit, just knowing what we did from the studies, the work in the youth bureau, the work in economic development, personally, it's exciting to see that there's a, you know, I can't say like a non-county-led venture out there that has taken the ball and ran with it. And to get to the point of putting some meat on the bones, it's pretty exciting that this is starting to materialize. That's all I wanted to discuss.
Thank you, Ian. Does anyone have any questions as far as the presentation or the comments to be provided?
Mr. Chairman, do you have a timeframe?
Yeah, good question. So the executive board of the Live Well next week will be actually sitting through and listening to three different presentations. Drew Sperms is going to be represented, but to do the process properly, the executive board has to hear some of the officials as far as what some other architectural firms are going to turn to the table. So that process is occurring next week. The three architectural firms, we're going to be, as the executive board, make a decision. And then the following week, Peter, myself, and absolutely, you know, Johnson, Jen, et cetera, are planning to go up to Pampdaker, New York, to meet with municipal solutions, talk some of the finance puzzle pieces that we started to lay out there. They're excited about the project, and we're looking to work with them to really bring this together as it continues to gain momentum. So from a timeframe standpoint, if anybody knows Peter, they wish we started yesterday. But as long as I keep the project moving along in a way that I think makes sense for the county and the project, you know, ideally, we'd like to break ground in the summer, which give us enough time to get all those pieces together with the architect and the funding, et cetera, while we feel comfortable that this will be successful. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Thank you for coming in. We look forward to future updates on this project process.
Yeah, again, appreciate the opportunity. Thanks again. I'll send the presentation to the slide digitally afterwards to the office.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer?
Oh, yes, Greg.
Just a second. Would you be willing to do presentations throughout the county, locally and stop, once you?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Whatever the county needs me to do to help is I would be happy to.
So that is probably your biggest issue is, you know, I represent North Dantville, 2020. Where you're proposing, what is the benefit or the downside of obviously that comes with that?
Yeah.
You know, have any kind of a presentation in terms of selling it to the community?
Well, yeah, no, absolutely. When I send out the email, I have all my contact in there for the group, and I'd be happy to work with any of the towns within the county to figure out how this project can become attractive to their residents and benefit as much as possible. I know the, when picking a location, and I was prepped on this in the previous conversation, it's always difficult, given the breakdown of our county from a geographic standpoint where we're going to put it. Now, obviously, the location is going to be on the list and donate, we feel good about it as far as it's right off the interstate from a accessibility standpoint. Now, it is in the northern part here of Livingston County, but it's working through those concerns that would be one of the things I can hope to do.
Me and my children, when they were growing up, played a lot at Livingston Athletics Center, you know, when we were there. It wasn't really an issue, but I know some people will have that concern, so thanks for that.
Oh, absolutely. I'm here to help.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have some resolutions on the preferred agenda.
Declining September 2022 as National Preparedness Month. Declining September 2022 as National Suicide Convention Month. Resolution in support of Senate Bill S9509 to eliminate the farm laborers wage board created through the Farm Workers Fair Labor Practices Act. Declaring surplus property sheriff's office.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolutions we're considering? If not, I'd entertain a motion in a second to bring those to a vote.
Move forward.
Is that all, second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If carried, a vote please, families, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absence 79, adopted.
We also have some resolutions that are going to require a separate long-term vote.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a letter of engagement for financial application and advocacy services. Brown, Wyandotte.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and may I ask for unanimous consent?
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absence 79, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Finger Lakes Therapy Works Physical Therapy Occupational Therapy Speech Language Pathology and Psychology, PLLC, Dr. Jennifer Graham Room-to-Bloom Therapy Services, LLC, Catherine Schleldorn, Deborah Yuvino, and Warren's Commercial Cleaning East.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and may I ask for unanimous consent?
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on these contracts? Hearing none, all please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absence 79, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Children's Home of Wyoming Conference.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and may I ask for unanimous consent?
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions on this resolution? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing the Commissioner of Social Services to sign a contract with the following, Livingston County Information and Technology Services and Livingston County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussions on any of these time frames? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Mr. Demming, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for Livingston County Board of Elections, New York State Board of Elections.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2021-372, CNS Engineers.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any questions or discussion on this amendment? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, Arc Flow, Cambridge Systematics, Inc., Lifespan of Greater Rochester, and Motorola Solutions, Inc.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on any of these time frames we're considering? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for Livingston County Emergency Communications Upgrade Project, Midstate Communications and Electronics, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, and New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. There are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Mr. Knapp, amending the 2022 Livingston County Budget, Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation. There are two. County Administrator, Department of Health, there are two. Office for the Aging and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions on these amendments? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, County Historian, Historian, Office for Emergency Management and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on any of these transfers? If there are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genesio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.